Call the business meeting, or excuse me, the work session to order at 6:39. All members are present, who are present, present, spend a day. We'll start out with communication items.
Okay, so we'll start off with our administrative updates. So I'm going to invite Cassiana to hear what's been happening at the elementary. It feels like we haven't heard from you guys for a while, so it'll be nice to, nice to see this happening.
These times is flash, keep right.
The whole year. Well, first of all, thank you for your commitment to the work that lies ahead of you and for all of the committees. And you know, part of all of those, I know it is a time commitment, but we appreciate your insight and commitment to all of those. Looking at the last couple of months, December, I don't know where it went, it flew by, but it was filled with a lot of great things at the elementary school. We held our annual gingerbread house making, which our second grade team and students invite families and friends in to make gingerbread houses. Our third graders also had their holiday program on December 12th. They did a great job performing here at the auditorium and again, for all of the elementary school as well. So they get performed twice. It was very exciting because they got to use our brand new risers, which were purchased from our fundraiser effort. So it was really neat to see that in action. I'd like to give a shout out to Barry as he assembled those in time for them to use on December 13th at the elementary. So that was pretty exciting. They fold up with like one push of a button and roll up, and then you drop them down. It's very minimal, does not require heavy lifting like the old ones. We are very thankful again for all of the fundraising efforts that our students do. So it's very exciting. Our fifth grade students participated in the annual Live United essay contest. And so that prompt was, how do you live united? What do you do to help others at home, at school, and in your community? And so fifth graders wrote to that prompt and Live United staff read through those. And we had a student, Zoe Sagi, receive the certification of achievement for her essay. And so congratulations to Zoe, and you can see her picture there. We are gearing up for our winter fast bridge benchmarking. If you recall, our data dive previously, we looked at fall data. And so now we are looking at our winter data and administering those assessments starting next week. So we'll have more data to adjust our instruction and meet the needs of our students based on their most current data. I provided a picture of our December Bulldog Spotlight recipients, again, students who are mindful, connected, and respectful. So we have lots of smiles, even some holiday attire in that photo to really represent December. So that was fun as well. Looking ahead to January, we have a busy month. Our third graders had to reschedule their visit to Corona's place to perform some of their songs. I think we have a snow day on that Thursday, so I'm happy that they are able to reschedule.
They're happy too.
Yes.
Daughter is.
Good.
My daughter is too.
Good. And then of course, ending that second quarter is coming up. So we are wrapping up the first half of the year officially. We've got a presentation to our fourth graders from Sterns Electric. They come each year and do a fun presentation for our fourth graders. And then just reminding our community and families of the quarter break day, January 17th, no school for students. And then on January 20th, no school for students as that is our teacher in service day. So we're planning for those two days. The paraprofessional week, more details to come on that. That is a Minnesota recognition week that the governor puts on. And then we also have our dare graduation for our fifth graders coming up at the end of the month as well. So lots of things happening this month. Any questions or things for me?
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. All right, and then we'll scale up to the secondary building, hear what's happening. Mr. Asnesson.
Evening, everybody. Thanks again. I just want to echo with Cassie, Ted, and thanks for all you do. Your passion for making Painsville a better place has ripple effects throughout this community that you probably won't ever notice, but I want to thank you for either work that you do. So I was thinking about our, our update here, and I had realized that it was last at the beginning of November that I talked to you. And so there's lots of things that have gone on since then, but a couple of cool things that I just wanted to share with you. One is our aerospace flight. So on November 20, 26th, eight Painsville students who are involved in the aerospace class got a chance to fly with local pilots who donated their time in their airplanes in order to take our students. They actually woke up that morning, sat behind the cockpit of the plane. They actually got to take off the plane, fly it to their socks center, Belgrade, or back here. And then they actually got to land the plane with the, with the pilot's guidance. So just, I got the opportunity to shuttle them out there, and they were terrified going out there, and they were so excited. So it just, I was in awe of the unique experience that our students got to experience. The only thought that was going through my head was, I'm glad it's not me. And how many other students around the country get to experience this? Like, they're just such a neat thing. So a big thanks to Tim Whaler, who works really hard to put that together and just go the extra mile for us, who's just cool. And if you want a chance, they, he tried to convince me to take one of the empty seats, and that wasn't happening. So if you ever want to get a chance, it's probably an empty seat sometimes, so.
There is, and it's worth it. I did it last year.
That's cool. I'll take your word for it. We had our Van Inquirer Memphis Nashville trip from November 28th to December 2nd. They got to do some really cool things. They got to go to a Sun Records Studio Tour, barbecue in downtown Memphis. They had to visit Graceland. They got to go to the Grand Ole Opry Show, a Nashville City Tour, Johnny Cash Museum. And they got to actually record songs that they had been practicing at the RCA Recording Studio. So again, I just like highlighting cool experiences, you know, and you never know what, what these experiences might do. You know, this may be, some of these might be the ignition points for careers for students. You know, they may, they may experience that one flight, and they think, this is it. This is what I want to do for the rest of their life. And so I really appreciate the teachers going above and beyond to create unique learning experiences for students. Looking forward to some things with Minnesota Paraprofessional Week. I just want to take a moment to say thank you to our paraprofessionals. They are essential to the success of our schools. Their dedication, hard work, and ability to create meaningful connections, make a lasting impact on our school community. Thank you for all that you do to help our students reach our full potential. We are truly grateful for you. As a former teacher in this district, I can't express enough how integral paraprofessionals are to the success of our students. So I appreciate everything that they do every day. Right now, then we kind of switch gears when we come back. We've, we're kind of into two big seasons now, and one big season is student registration. So some of the things that we're doing at the secondary right now is we're going through our course catalog to kind of review the classes that we offer and kind of to take a look at and, and see what classes we should be offering. For instance, this pro, this process brought about a digital citizenship class this year that teaches middle school students how to better engage with the internet safely. And so we're taking a look at what classes we offer and what classes we should be offering to help with the success of, for the future students. And then the other big season is statewide testing goes on from February 24th to April 24th. And we're, we're taking steps to plan and prepare for statewide testing. So those two big seasons are happening right now in the, in the secondary here.
All right, any questions for Mr. Asnesson? All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you.
All right, and community education. Let's hear what's happening in our littles, our olders, and everyone in between.
Yeah.
So, thank you. All right, so our winter catalog has been out since December. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about our adult leagues. We have quite a turnout in our adult league program. Our adult volleyball, we have 12 teams this year. I think it went up two or four teams, I think is what Melody said. Basketball has 10. And we have a soccer league that just started on Sunday, and we have six teams. So we're running through gyms. So, and the soccer league is some high school kids as well, but it's mixed with adults. And so we're starting to see, you know, the, the winter season and fall, I'm sorry, early winter and into the, into the season. Pretty busy with adult recreation as well as youth. Um, I just attached a course tally sheet for, uh, and that, that is just, the, the classes to date that we've, you know, in our winter catalog. Just how many have signed up? What, what we're looking at, how many more we need in some of our classes? The pink reflex canceled. And we had 200 in, I think that's a 68.
Yep.
220 are unique, so not, you know, so that's interesting. A lot of just single users in that, in that timeframe. So there'll be more to come. There's baseball season and stuff is still, is listed in there in some of our summer programs. But that's for you guys to take a look at the, just where we're at when we get enrollment. Um, popular adult classes are, of course, are 55 Alive. We have quite a few people that are signing up for those. And we're just trying to expand some more opportunity for adult classes. Sometimes we get quite a few people to sign up, sometimes we don't get any. So just, we have a, we have a bread making class, I'm making that. Bread and fudge, I'm like, wow, I do food groups. Anyway, we, we got some fun stuff going on with classes. Adult-based education is happening right next door, actually. I think she has eight participants. We added some childcare, starting tonight. We had some families that are individuals that, um, their barrier was childcare, that they were unable to take class. And so it worked out that one of my staff, their kids are wrestling, and they're here anyway. So they might as well come on down and make a little extra money. So that started today. Oh, um, early childhood, we have our, our second round of ECFE classes starting on January 14th. They, right now, we only have three students signed up for our zero to ones. I'll be emailing those families and seeing if they can find a friend or two. We'll probably still run the class, we'll just run with one staff until it gets bigger. And then our preschool prep is the two and three-year-olds. We have nine children signed up for that. So those are the family ed classes, parents and children attend. Um, another thing that's going on is our playground. Um, so updates on the playground project. We are ordering equipment starting next week. Um, we've been, uh, we're still waiting for a grant. And we've been getting a few businesses and organizations that have made some donations. So we're sitting in a, in a good spot. And we're able to, we didn't, we got the must haves in our, in our, uh, equipments and must haves in what we need for, for the playground. And we're able to get that, like I said, ordered next week. And just depending on, like I said, we're waiting for the grant. If that we goes through, then that will depend on what kind of, what goes underneath the playground. Will it be woodchips? Will it be all poured in place? Or will it be a combination of woodchips and trails? You know, so that's, we're excited. Um, in December, the Painsville American Legion held a raffle. We sold over 200 tickets and, um, thanks Gerald. It was a very good event, and we had a, a nice time during that, that event. And that it was a decent turnout. We were, we were very grateful for Gerald and the Painsville Legion for supporting the program. We also, which is not on here, and I can add it for later, but, um, NHS is also helping with some fundraising, and they're, um, they're going to the local organizations and talking about our playground. So, um, so we just talked about what the deadline would be, and more to come on that. And maybe next time, we'll have you present, so.
About that.
Um, preschool, so we'll leave it at that. We're talking about next year's preschool. We have information night on March 6th. So these are the things that are on the horizon. And I'll be sending packets out soon to, in February, to, to target our three-year-old families and, and some of our four-year-old families as well. And then registration will open on March 14th. Um, our fitness center, Packet Fitness Center, this is the time of year where we had a lot of vendors. So we're busy onboarding new members. It's a busy place. We have athletics and activities, taking a lot of that busyness with their, with their games, double headers, and practices. But it's busy with other stuff. So we've got some community events that are going on, which I'm kind of excited about. Winter market, um, approach, or harvest market approach, we, and we, we are set up a winter market. So on the third Saturdays of January through April, um, there are four to seven or eight vendors. So the first one only had four vendors. And it sounds like six to eight vendors will be at this next one on January 18th. So they're set up in the lobby of our community center, and they're open the same time as our staff is there. Um, and so, yeah, so that's kind of a different way to use our space. And, um, they had a good turnout. Uh, there's a big wrestling tournament this weekend, this weekend on Saturday. There's the high school wrestling, but then the next day is youth wrestling. So there'll be lots of people here and not a lot of parking spots, so. Um, and then the next day is just for kicks dance recital. So the building's going to get a workout today, so, or this weekend. Um, what's next? Um, well, we're summer programming, I've got concerts all set. We're working on summer camp themes for Paws, trying to get speakers, field trips, classes. We'll be pushing the summer baseball and softball programs to get their registrations in by April 1st. Because many of these programs need to know how many teams you have so they can set up the leagues and get their fields and get, get that all set up. So we're putting a big push out to those parents to get that done earlier rather than waiting. And then, um, our spring catalog, it comes out the first week of April, and it will be a spring-summer edition. So we dropped a, we dropped a catalog and, and are combining our spring-summer programming, and that will come on April 1st. And then finally, the, on January 14th, we, um, there are two other chair people that are helping. But, um, we're getting some training for that rural childcare initiative program, right? All the letters stand for, but that is the upcoming, um, initiative strategic planning that we'll be working on that's coming to pass. So we're taking our first set of training, and then we'll be connecting with our core group. And be a lot more to report, as we could point out now.
Sounds good.
Questions? Any other questions or comments for community education? All right, thank you. And finally, for today, let's find out what's happening in our buildings and grounds.
Good evening. So I suppose most of you didn't notice, but this room has actually got the speakers in it already. Oh, so it's an update on audio enhancement. They are pulling a lot of wire, they're actually moving. I thought really well, we had a meeting, they walked around today, so we had audio enhancement here. The DPS, just going through some concerns we had and working them out. And it, uh, it's like it's going to work out really well. Some speakers, not as many in certain spots, but we're going to use a few of them in other spaces. So it's just kind of mixing and matching, and it's going really well. Uh, they're actually going to bring a big crew in the rest of this week. Um, and they're actually, they can make, could actually make it over to the elementary school even this week. Couple guys here, a couple guys over there, so Ken will be running back and forth more, so busy.
These four.
Yep, these four.
Oh, these two's great ones.
And they'll be a big box, they don't have that in this room yet. They're putting them by the doors mostly. It'll be a weight control box for the thing that's got them and so on. Yep, they look nice, couldn't even tell. Um, over the break, it was kind of nice. Uh, I did have a few days off, but I did get in here and a couple water line leaks from the heating system. We got them all repaired up, so we didn't have to have garbage cans and pails and ceiling tiles and stuff anymore. That's always a, I enjoy taking them out. Especially when they've been up there before I started. Oh, look at the new pail. Um, with that, fire marshal list is getting smaller. Um, we had to make some few alarms that weren't working. Beacon alarms in the old school yet that just bore out to quit working. So that got happened, and we had to put a couple in the courtyards because we are using them as classrooms. So they had to have, uh, fire alarms outside. So that's all completed. And then, uh, door seven and eight are pretty much complete. Uh, they got the new post in on eight. Um, they're a little tougher shape than what they looked before they got the work started. So it had crushed that aluminum a little farther. Um, we are going to probably just leave it. We're thinking the guys from the awning place of the construction, they thought that it might stretch back out a little somewhat, and then go in and cock the bottoms and tops and make it look as professional as we can. Uh, if you guys have any concerns or anything, you can always call and ask whatever, so. But it did, uh, the doors work nice now, and they've come in, and so everything's working great.
And those are square.
Most people would not even notice, you know, I would, like. Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Move on to legislative priority.
Uh, so this is the time of year that if you haven't been hearing about, um, the impending legislative session is going to be one to watch. I think we're going to have some interesting dynamics. Um, and whether we get going on time, don't get going, it'll be really interesting. Um, what I have included here, and I just want to spend a couple of minutes taking a look at, are just five of, well, we're going to just look at four, but there are five legislative platforms that I will share with you over the course of time. So MASA is the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. So that's the superintendent organization that is really my resource, and that's my network that I, I work pretty consistently with around, um, around legislative issues. Um, so let's start with that one, and then we'll go into each of the other ones. So, uh, the MASA legislative platform is really, and you're going to notice some commonalities and some themes across these platforms. And that has been intentional. Um, one of the things I think, um, we all noticed over the course of years is that if we approach the legislature with very, very different priorities, they don't necessarily know what to focus on as the greatest priority, okay? So you're going to notice that there are some common themes. Um, so the, the three big bullets are local control and flexibility, adequate funding, and expand educator workforce. So in short, you kind of see these bullets of like, these are the, the main things we're going to look at. Um, and then the next page is going to be in a little bit more detail what each of those mean. So just kind of in, in short, local control and flexibility is really about giving you a school board the authority to make more decisions. There's something that should be done instead of having it dictated at the legislature. That's fine, we have to dictate it, but decide it at the school board level. Or just allow school boards to make the decisions that you've been elected to make. So really about, um, uh, kind of looking at your capital levies is one, one area. Um, you might be, we haven't talked a lot about it at the board level because it hasn't been applicable to us. But last legislative session, um, operating levies, uh, school boards were given the authority to renew an operating levy for the period of whatever was authorized the previous vote. So there is a request to have that same authority designated to capital project levies. So that would be in addition to an operating, an operating referendum. Talking about effective discipline policies, we've had a lot of conversation around, um, at the policy committee and the policy level, we've had conversation around how that has changed and what we can do, can't do, um, the components of discipline that are mandated. So the request is just to bring that back to local control, okay? Um, and then allow for flexible learning environments. This has to do with seat time requirements versus credit, like credit hours and seat hours. Or is it allowing more of a, um, a demonstrated learning? So there's different capacities to, um, hold your learning environments. Adequate funding, um, you're going to see consistently across the board that there's going to be a request for money in addition to, um, the inflationary increase. Okay, so you'll see that pretty consistently. You're also going to see a lot of reference about funding unemployment insurance. So again, the, um, that is the, um, the summer unemployment that we can't put onto our unemployment levy. Um, and the state funding, um, was set for, and I'm sorry, I'm not going to remember the dollar amount, but it's only per dollar amount, and when that's gone, it's gone. So we will be nearing the end of that funding revenue. So there's conversation about funding the unemployment. Um, eliminating cross subsidies, this is an area that we probably remember hearing, um, year over year. We have made some progress in regards to, um, the cross subsidy for special education. Um, there's an advocacy to increase that to a greater level. And also to take into account the cross subsidy for students that receive English language learner services. Um, and compensatory funding is again, the funding that has been received from the free and reduced lunch forms, okay? That's one of the, one of the key substantive, um, processes to generate compensatory revenue. And we've been talking as organizations about how problematic that is, that our funding is based on completion of a form, okay? So those are conversations. Expanding educator workforce, we know that there's teacher shortages. We also know that, um, sometimes the, uh, the licensure process can be burdensome, and it can be prohibitive. And so talking about how to broaden those pathways and, and expand, maybe I'll use science as an example to, um, make science a little bit more inclusive to teaching multiple areas versus one area of science with a license, as a, for instance, okay? Um, and then we've also talked a lot about, um, the, so we've, we've talked a lot about letters as a school district. But we've also, um, within organizations, talked a lot about how our teacher preparation programs really need to be preparing our educators that come into our school districts with the requirements of, of statute versus having us having to, um, train them with letters or whichever process. So we're asking for them to really prepare the workforce to meet legislative requirements, okay? So those are some of the big areas. I'm not going to walk through each of these because these are kind of the, um, the breakdown of some of those areas. But this one again was for MASA, the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. Um, and as I click into, if I can get over to the next slide, as I click into MSBA, which is the Minnesota School Board Association, so you're going to see some very similar, um, conversations and dialogue, okay? Their platform looks a little bit different. Okay, if that comes up. Um, but you'll see that they are focused that really it's students and families, school boards and school districts and the state legislature of how, that's how we build up education. And then you're going to see what they're talking about for funding priorities. They're asking to increase the general formula, just like MASA. Um, they're asking to, um, they're asking for 3%. So, um, again, just as a reminder, in the last legislative session, um, there was an, in, um, there was indexing to inflation with a minimum of 2%, a maximum of 3%. So wherever the, wherever the, uh, index falls is what the formula will automatically increase to. All of the organizations are recognizing that you can't make up a death. a deficit in spending or a deficit in funding of school districts in one session. So there's asking to add on to that indexed infla, and that in inflation indexed formula. Okay? You're going to see long-term facility maintenance revenue. Um, as a facilities committee, we've talked about long-term facility maintenance. And really that is about our roofs, our pavement, security. Um, it's increasing, um, some of the, um, or it's removing a cap, I guess is their advocacy to remove the cap on, um, long-term facility maintenance. Um, funding for new benefits. So you're going to see two different leaves that are identified here. Earn safe and sick time. We've talked about um, around, um, uh, in negotiations around contract language. But coming up in 2025, we, um, have to start reporting. And then in 2026, pay leave becomes, um, an eligible, uh, benefit for all Minnesota workers. And there's, there's a request to, um, fund that benefit and, and increase revenues to help offset those costs. Um, so I, I'm not going to walk through every single one of these, but you're going to see some of those, um, those similarities. In policy, you're going to see again, local school board authority. So there's a, a concerted ask to keep decisions at the local school board. Um, you're going to see, um, so the capital projects levy is another similar example where you're going to see again the request to allow school boards to renew a levy should they want to do that instead of going to the voters. Now, as a board, there's going to be pros and cons that at the point in time where you would be considering that and would talk through those options. But what they're asking for is for school boards to be able to have that determinate, that ability. Okay? Um, so this one is the school board association. Um, again, I'm, it's here for all of you to take a look at and dig into a little bit more. Um, the next one we're going to just briefly take a look at is MREA. So MREA is the Minnesota Rural Education Association. So they're also taking a look at, um, at, uh, teacher compensation, funding what has been mandated and closing, uh, closing funding gaps. And they're also asking for policy flexibility, not mandates. Okay? So those are conversations that you're going to see pretty consistently again. Um, letting school boards have the authority, use the authority that you've been elected to have is a very, um, it's a conversation in multiple platforms. And then the final one that I'm going to just share with you is, um, SAC, which is the Schools Advocating for Fair Funding. So you'll, you'll notice this one really is, um, two pretty basic planks. The first one is make education related levies fairer and more consistent. So schools advocating for fair funding is really about maximizing equitable distribution of funds across the state of Minnesota so that our taxpayers um, don't have to have an unfair burden. Um, when you, like your residential taxpayers don't have an unfair burden in comparison to districts that have lots of industries to help share the cost of a levy or referendum. And what they're recognizing is that back in the day, there used to be, um, a much higher rate of equalization. So that our taxpayers, when we voted, when, when our taxpayers voted to approve a levy, um, there was funding to help offset that burden for taxpayers. That has eroded over the course of time. SAC is really saying that's not okay. They're really advocating to bring that equalization to a more comparable level. Okay? This is, um, I would say this portion of the dialogue has been in existence probably as long as, um, uh, funding special education at a hundred percent, right? Like, I mean, we hear those things and I, so it's, it's, it's not a new conversation, but it's so critically important that you'll see that this is just one of the two dialogue components of this organization. Okay? And then the second one is improve the stability of school funding to promote greater fairness. So you'll see the kind of four bullet points there um, to, um, to really stabilize, um, education funding. So again, you're going to see some common themes here within the legislative, um, platforms, but I guess I just wanted to kind of pause and, and open it up to you to see, are there questions that you have? Are there things that you would like me to be researching or focusing on with our legislators? Um, in the upcoming months, um, I will be at the Capitol a number of times. Um, Thomas, I presume would, will be there as well. Um, what would you like me to be, have on my radar that maybe I don't already have?
Nothing specific. I just looked at it from the simple side. If you get enough committees together with a base cost for a pile of different committees and they don't, they're all saying the same thing, working from different committees. I wonder sometimes if they would all work together. How much simpler it would be. We talk about it all the time. We're supposed to work with our, our stakeholders in the community. We're supposed to be working together. And here you have an echelon out of a whole bunch of organizations out there with fees and costs for every single one trying to accomplish the same thing. It doesn't always make a lot of sense to me. That's just the logic from my side says you should be working together for one simple presentation. And instead you have a pile of organizations going in. Now take the legislators. They're down there now with four different people coming in. Well, maybe, maybe that's how it should work. I'm not positive because I've watched that what used to be the Equity in Schools for Education, what you call now is safe. Well, we have this name changes that go on and all that. They just can kind of go on forever. So I know I sounds terrible, but are we making jobs for a whole bunch of people running these committees? Or are we really working on the solution to have a single presentation to the, the states so the legislators can get a grip on some of this?
So I think, I think that's exactly why you see so many common themes across all of these platforms. Because the, each legislation does have a niche, right, of things that might be unique to them. As a, for instance, MREA has a couple of things that are a little bit more specific to rural school districts. But every one of them is really talking about, um, money on top of the formula. In years past, we've, there's been consistent conversation around, um, indexing, indexing the formula for inflation. Last legislative session, that happened, right? So there's, I, I hear what you're saying, Bruce, that it, when you give five different visuals and five different, they all look different. What is the same? That's part of our job when we're there visiting with legislators to say, here are the common themes that we all talk through. And that's one of the things that I think our organizations do do is they do come together to talk about what those things are that are the same. Would it be nice to have just, okay, here's the education platform? Sure. But I don't know which one, who gets to do it, right?
Yeah, but we look at it ten years down the road. Do then we have seven of them? That, that's all I'm saying. You, these organizations need to be working together if your, if your goal is common. Yep, you might have your own special parts. Why doesn't that work into one? So your presentation to the state governments is there. I, I sometimes look at this and I see all the fees that we pay. And it's like, man, I think you guys should be kind of working together a little bit here.
And, and I, and I, I would say they are and they have done better, but they do all maintain their own platforms. And I, I hear that, but they do all work together because of that reason, because they need to focus efforts and, and make some, have some conversational change. Yep.
I, I think a big thing, uh, stay focused on, and I believe you're doing it, Janelle, uh, even Thomas are getting, allowing the school board to, to be a school board and take care of business. That, uh, we see within our district that, uh, that we see fit because we are elected officials. We, we trust the elected officials that we have, uh, in this particular place here to speak for us out here. Uh, we shouldn't be afforded that same, uh, privilege here as elected officials within the community to ensure that our school district, uh, can operate smoothly without having what we would consider those, uh, representatives down there dictating to a school board, another elected official their business or operate, uh, within a community. So, uh, just a big push for that. Thank you.
Otherwise, with, there aren't any other questions, I'll turn it back to you. Okay, uh, request for my turnaround table.
Uh, so West Central Island District, uh, we have a meeting coming up next Monday. So that'll be the, the first for, uh, for this year, uh, 2025. Uh, looking forward to that. So kind of going through the same process that we did here tonight as far as so for, uh, chairperson and, uh, vice chair. But, uh, very excited, uh, with, uh, where they're, uh, where we ended last year with, uh, West Central Island District, especially with the sale program here. And where we're going to continue, uh, this year. So looking forward to that. So that's next, uh, the, Melrose, uh, next Monday.
I've got a question. Uh, I've got a hotel confirmation, but is there going to be a, uh, agenda coming out as far as, uh, for the morning of the sixteenth from the MSB, uh?
The MSB, for the MSBA conference? Um, I haven't looked at my email this afternoon to see if an agenda came out.
When one would come out, if somebody could forward that. So I don't know what time that starts.
Has the catalog come out with the? Yeah.
I get that. That's.
Yeah, generally on, um, on Thursday morning, I believe this, and I'll, I'll confirm Ron, but it's, it starts about seven thirty, eight o'clock.
Opening is like nine o'clock or something like that.